Good evening. My name is Ed Behr. I have been asked to moderate this meeting this evening and it was just sworn in, so we'd like to get started if we could. We're going to begin with a few preliminaries that aren't on the warrant, so please bear with us. This might take five minutes or so. We're going to start by recognizing Ben Herbis, who's going to address the people assembled here with a few minutes of remarks.
Oh, wow.
How's that?
I didn't expect to start off.[34.22][34.22](Laughter) But I think it's a good show. I just want to let the town of Newburgh know what we've been doing here over on the Lindsay Road at Fred O'Leary Community Church. We are a non-denominational church. We've been doing a lot of things here. We opened up the food pantry with Rachel Lindsay and her father-in-law here there last year, so we've been feeding about forty, fifty-plus residents throughout the week on Fridays. It's every Friday from eleven to twelve-thirty. We meet families who have emergency needs throughout the week, so that's been a special process. But we've been cleaning up there, and right now we've just finished a meeting hall down the basement of the church, completely cleaned this place out and wanted to really open it up to the community. So that is going to be a place in Newburgh where we can actually rent out space for wedding parties, weddings, or any type of events open to the public. So that's kind of what we want to do in our building here, because the church in itself is just a building, as a people, not a building. So we want to open it up to everybody, and we just want to bring that to you today. That's all I really got. I really wanted to thank everybody in the town of Newburgh for allowing me to serve you all and be in this community, and it is an honor. There are a lot of great people in this town. If anyone has any more information about our service time, I have brochures. I also have a card here. We're on Facebook. I'm also online. Please come to me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Garen, who's a candidate for a state senate, will be representing you as successful, is here this evening. The board has agreed to give her a couple of minutes to address you as well.
And I know you don't want to hear a politician talk for a long time, so I'll be brief. I'm a former second-grade school teacher. My husband and I own RM Flag. I've been four terms in the House of Representatives, representing Glenwood, Levian, and Condeske, and now I'm running for the state senate. I'm a country girl who grew up in Condeske. My dad was a volunteer firefighter. I see some firefighters in the audience today, and I appreciate what you do. My contact information is on the card that I gave out, and if anybody had any questions about the positions that I have, I'd be happy to talk to you about that. Have a good time.
Thank you. And I've been asked to announce, and I apologize if I didn't catch the name, but a local business has donated a cake, and I gather that it's not there just to be looked at.[212.26][212.26](Laughter) And if there's an appropriate time, if you haven't had a chance to get up and get one, we'll take a brief recess halfway through the meeting, and perhaps you can do that.
This is Cornerstone Market, and it's Jerry Ireland. He's sitting right back there.
Where are you, Jerry? Thank you. Thank you very much. One other preliminary matter. Under state law, it's required that two-thirds of you vote in the affirmative in order to allow non-residents to speak at a town meeting. It's traditional that you would allow that. They obviously don't vote, but they may hold positions with the town. For instance, the town manager, the fire chief, are non-residents, and we need a vote of two-thirds to allow them to speak and comment on various items tonight. So I'd ask for a vote by a show of hands to allow non-residents, not just those two, but any other non-resident to speak. Thank you. Is anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Move on now to Article Two, which is to elect by secret ballot one selectman, tax assessor, and overseer of the poor for a term of three years, and I have been provided with the election results. Renee O'Donnell was elected with 296 votes to that position. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to act as road commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion that we accept as written.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Three? Opposed? Thank you. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $728 received from the state for snowmobile registration to the Newburgh Countryside Riders Snowmobile Club for the maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept as written.
No?
Second.
Second? Then moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Does the people call man on that?
Yes, of course.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know what they're doing with that.
Stand up.
I'm sorry. I'd like to know who's in charge of what they're doing with the cars.
Okay. Is there a representative of the Newburgh?
Yeah, I am.
Yes, sir.
The president of it. Yeah, bottom caller on it with it. Make sure it gets the vice president covered in.
Fire department?
Bottom caller on fire company with it.
Hey, drive these barrels strictly snowmobiles. What are you doing for ATVs?
Nothing. I sold this problem out of ATVs.
Strictly. Okay. I haven't seen the driver, so I don't know.
Yeah.
When the club needs, where do they need?
At twenty-eight sixty-three West Manhattan. My shop on the night.
Okay, we've been there several times. I don't know if they know. Okay, well, I'll touch with you if you have it. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on Article Number Four? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is all of this money strictly on the snowmobile registration?
This money comes back from the state, the portion of the registration the state gets. They send that to the town.
I think it's a question.
When I'm asking, is India this money for IRB registration?
No, just snowmobiles.
Is there anything in here that the progressives get IRBs?
No, they don't get, I don't believe they get money back from anything.
So you send it all right to the state?
Yeah.
Any further questions on Article Number Four? Okay, all those in favor of Article Four as written? Opposed? Article Four passes. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to allow all revenue provided by Capital Ambulance, private donations, and fundraising to be transferred to the Rescue Education Equipment Reserve Account. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept as written.
Second?
Sorry, ma'am.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article Number Five? Sensing that there isn't, all in favor of Article Five? Anyone opposed? Article Five passes. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to set the date that property taxes will be due in two-weekly installments, November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, and March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, and to fix the rate of interest at eight percent to be charged on unpaid amounts beginning December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, and April thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, the board of selectmen recommends yes. The maximum rate set by the state of Maine is eight percent. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept as written.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on Article Number Six? Yes, ma'am?
I just wondered with, they no longer give a discount for, if you're getting your taxes early. Has that worked out well? Is that bringing in more revenue earlier or later? Or you really haven't seen a difference?
Yes, yes.
It's doing well.
Yes. We did the bond two years ago, and the bond bank was totally astonished at the rate of collection that we had. We're in like ninety-five percentile of collection of debt.
Right, and you don't see any people who act, and you're right.
There's a few. There's always a certain few, but for the most part, people are really good at voting their taxes in.
Yes, ma'am?
Is this eight percent charged rolling, or is it a one-time eight percent?
It would be eight percent from the day, if you pay your taxes after, for example, December fourteenth, then interest would apply from that date. And I don't know, does it apply back to the thirteenth?
It's a per year.
From the fourteenth of December forward, or does it roll back to November thirteenth?
No, from fourteenth on.
Okay. Any other questions on Article Number Six? I'll ask those in favor to raise their hands, please. Opposed? Thank you. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to spend overlay funds for abatement and unanticipated expenses, for example, a forest fire, a major breakdown of fire equipment. The selectmen recommend yes on this article.
I make a motion to accept as written.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on Article Number Seven? Sensing that there isn't, I'll ask for a vote on Article Seven. All in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Article Seven passes. Article Eight, does everyone have a town warrant? Because I don't propose to read line item all of these, okay? Is that acceptable to everyone, that I will dispense with reading the list of, okay, good. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend any and all donations, grants, revenues, reimbursements, state or federal FEMA monies, and/or other federal, state, private, or international grants or reimbursements, as provided by the main state legislature, state of Maine divisions, departments, or bureaus, and/or federal, local, or private sources. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend yes on this. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept as written.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? All in favor of accepting the free money, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and/or dispose of any excess property, real estate acquired by the town through non-payment of property of taxes thereon, subject to advertising of same for three consecutive days in a local paper on such terms as they deem advisable, and to execute a quitclaim deed for such property, except the board of selectmen may allow the immediate previous owner or heirs one generation, up to ninety days, to redeem said property by payment of all unpaid taxes on said property, plus interest, lien cost, and recording fees. The selectmen recommend yes on this article.
I make a motion to accept as written.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on this? All those in favor of Article Number Nine, please raise your hands. All those opposed? It has passage. Thank you. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to accept any revenues, gifts, unanticipated donations, or pass-through funds that may be provided by individuals, business associations, charitable groups, or other organizations, which have not been listed in any previous or following articles, if the board of selectmen determine that the gifts, donations, or pass-through funds are in the best interest of the town. The board of selectmen recommends yes.
I make a motion to pass as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second. Any discussion on this article?
We don't have to give up the cake.
The cake would fall under this category. If you don't vote yet.[827.04][827.04](Laughter) Yes?
Will we be made aware of what you're doing at selectmen, what you think before they just like just pass them on your donations?
It's all goes to the board, yes.
The board has to act on a published agenda, so I would assume if there was a donation like any other article or issue on their agenda, it would be posted as such. State law requires that you, believe it or not, a town can't actually accept a gift unless the town votes to accept the gift. So by passing this article, you allow the selectmen to accept that gift on behalf of the town rather than calling a special town meeting or passing on it because they don't want to go to the trouble of calling a town meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Article Eleven, to nominate and elect two members to the planning board for the term of three years each. I gather that we will require nomination and a second to that nomination, and then I'll ask if there are any other nominations, and if there are not, then we will have a vote on that first nominee, and then we will ask for a second nominee. So is there a nominee for a position on the planning board for a three-year term?
Would I nominate Lawrence Hamilton?
Lawrence Hamilton? Is there a second to that?
I second that.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Is there any discussion on this nomination? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's one. Is there a nomination for a second individual to a three-year term on the planning board? Does anybody want to nominate the person to their immediate right?[954.25][954.25](Laughter) To their left. It's a very important position. I hope somebody will, if not nominate, volunteer. I tell you what, we'll come back to this one. We'll move on and see how we do. Remind me to come back to Article Ten, someone, okay, because otherwise I'll...
I'll go eleven.
Come back to eleven too, then. All right. See if we can do a little bit on Article Twelve. To nominate and elect two alternate members to the planning board for terms of one year each. Is there a nomination for an alternate member of the planning board?
Can I make a comment?
I've got to have a nomination. You can make a comment. Let's have a comment, see if maybe we can move the whole process along a little bit. Is that it?
These are two vacant positions. Ryan Mortimer, Chair of the Board. We ask that as an alternate, if you're available to come, if you can't, we understand. It's, we do a lot of work behind the scenes because a lot of people don't come, but it is important work, so it's a way to help the town without having to have that full-time commitment as an alternate. So really, mostly times it would be easier. We're usually like during the summer, because some people on vacation or during the holidays and stuff like that. So it's a chance, an opportunity to help out the town without having to be fully committed. How often do you meet? We meet once a month. Right now, it's the first Wednesday of every month, Wednesday night at seven. That's going to change a little bit due to scheduling, but it's only going to be once a month.
Sure.
I think so.
I'll turn it.
Having heard that description from the current Chair of the Board, is there anyone who is willing to serve or willing to be nominated to serve as an alternate member of the planning board?
I'll volunteer to be an alternate.
You will? And your name, sir?
Drew Wiltbank. Yes, sir.
Good job.
Drew Wiltbank has volunteered. Could somebody second his volunteer?
Seconded him.
Seconded. Is there anyone else? Is there any discussion about Mr. Wiltbank's volunteering and nomination to the position of alternate of the planning board? All in favor? Anyone opposed to this?[1131.82][1131.82](Laughter) Is there anyone interested in the second alternate position that is open and available right now?
I'll give it to her.
Tell them your name.
Rhonda Fraser.
With an H?
Yes.
F-R-A?
S-E-R.
S-E-R. Anybody second Rhonda Fraser's volunteering to this board?
I second.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? There you go. We're on a roll. Let's go back to Number Eleven. Is there anybody who is willing to be nominated and serve as a member of the planning board for a term of three years?
Would I nominate Charles Homestead for planning board for three years?
Charles Homestead?
Clarence.
Clarence.
Clarence. Yes.
D or E-A-D?
No.
No. Clarence Homestead has been nominated. Was there a second to that?
Seconded.
Been seconded. Is there any discussion on Mr. Homestead's nomination? Fitness for office, anything like that? All in favor? Closed. Thank you very much for your service. Article Thirteen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government. Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee recommends $240,053. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for general government, $240,053.
Is there a second to that?
Seconded.
Second. Is there any discussion on this article, Article Number Thirteen? Sensing that there isn't, all in favor of the article as written? Opposed? Article Thirteen passes. Fourteen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public safety. Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend $93,264. Do I hear a motion on Article Fourteen?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for public safety, $93,264.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
It's been moved and it's been seconded. Is there a discussion on Article Fourteen? Yes, sir.
A question on first responders. Is that an increase?
The first responder operating budget was flat funded. There was no increase, no increase at all.
And the same thing with the...
The compensation?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I don't think so. Yeah, it was the same as last year.
Same thing with the fire, huh?
Same thing for the fire department, yes.
No, the fire department.
Oh, great, okay. We had an increase in the system chief in the fire department or the ethanol business?
No, just in the operating budget. Everything else was the same.
Because of payroll or not, because of the increase in the...
Yeah, payroll or not, right. Payroll or not, because we had a few more firemen come in, and the operating budget did increase a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question in the Selectmen's letter. It was mentioned that there should be set up a capital fund for the fire department. I don't see it anywhere within the articles. Does that, did that not come forward in time for the meeting, or did I do something?
It was done in the last year. The last, it was a February meeting when we passed the public, last June, when we did the fire department events. As part of the, we were, that allowed us to build people for fire and rescue car accidents, and a capital fund was set up for each, and that's where that money goes.
I realize that. I guess I misunderstood the letter. I thought that we were also talking about adding to that coming other resources, like... We have not done that this year, no. Okay. I mean, it would be nice if we could start doing that. That was just a discussion that I think I would like to do.
I would just like, in fact, I'll also start the Selectmen's meeting, a Selectmen's letter. It was implied that that had never been suggested before. I sat on that board, on that Budget Committee for many years, and said, "We need to do this," for several years, and I was ignored. So it has been suggested in the past. It's not anything.
I just certainly didn't need to imply that. I didn't imply that we were having such a big thing coming up, a big expense coming up.
Any more discussion on Article Fourteen? Yes, Rhonda?
Said the operating budget went up. What, what amount?
About $8,000.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
This $8,000, what was it called?
It's for radios. All of the, the fire department's radios, and you guys can speak to this a little bit better, their radios are almost obsolete. They are to the point where they don't need repair of anymore.
I'm going to close discussion unless there's any other comment. Okay, all those in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your hands. Opposed? Article Fourteen passes. Thank you. Article Fifteen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal control, the board of selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend $7,161. Do I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for animal control, $7,161.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on Article Fifteen? Yes, ma'am?
I brought this up before. I know that it, I don't think it works because of the way the contracts are done, but if there's some way to look at not contracting with the Humane Society for next year, because I think we took ten caps last year, and it was $25,000.
We just had that at the, yes. I knew Emily, the full officer, because she just fit into the job, but next year, we're going to work with water, because that's closer for her to go, and they have a lot more services that they provide, and then I believe they're not going to be expensive.
As, as.
Yes.
Any more discussion on Article Number Fifteen? If not, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of Article Fifteen as written? Opposed?
No.
Thank you. That's passage. Article Sixteen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for road maintenance, the board of selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend $411,556. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for road maintenance, $411,556.
Second?
Seconded.
Been moved and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on Article Sixteen? Yes, sir?
What's in that $208,000 for summer roads?
$208,000 for summer roads. The summer roads came in, $778,576, and we've got a bid for repair and damage from erosion from last fall. We had that big rain in October in the wind. That was about $15,000, that accident was, and then we put a little bit in there for widdle roads, which we're cutting out.
Anything going to be on that jet in him that washed out?
For ditching, is that what you're asking?
No, fixing alongside the tower. It's all washed out, breaking my driveway, all the way down the mountain hill.
That's not a good decision, I believe.
It's over a foot deep.
Well, we'll have to dress that at a selectmen's meeting. I don't have that right in front of me, but we do have money in there for addressing that walk, the dusty walk.
Any other discussions or comments on Article Sixteen? All in favor of Article Sixteen, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Raise your hand. Article Sixteen has passage. Article Seventeen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for waste management, solid waste recycling. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $110,724. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for waste management, solid waste recycling, $110,000, excuse me, let's try it again, $110,724.
$110,724?
That wasn't right. No, I'm going to say that.
That's what you meant to say. Can someone who understood that second it?
Seconded.
Been seconded, and I believe that the motion is to raise $110,724. Do I hear any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article Seventeen. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That's passage. Eighteen, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for building repair and maintenance. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $4,600. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for building repair and maintenance, $4,600.
Is there a second to that?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
What's the other buildings? What's the other buildings, $2,000?
Other buildings are minor repairs. We never got to replace the pump house last year down at the fire farm. We had to replace a furnace in the firehouse, you know.
Did that fall on you? You already have that money.
I think they're...
I think she's asking if that would fall under the fire department? Is that what you're asking, Rhonda?
No, it's not, it's not an operating, it's just for maintenance of the stairs.
Think she might be looking at the line above it, though, that says fire department, sixteen hundred.
Six hundred dollars. That's for the western area station and the...
Western out station.
And then the two thousand used to cover the pump house, the salt can, if we needed anything, it was, that when we had to kind of station different ones like that.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh. You said you had to replace the furnace?
No, we had to replace the blower twice, I believe.
The what?
The blower.
The blower?
Huh?
You've already done that?
Had to do that twice this winter, burned up the blowers.
Then why do we raise any money to do it next year?
In case it burns up another blower next year. So we replaced one two, I believe two years ago, we did one of those.
But we could just let it freeze.
I think that's a couple of...
Yes, sir?
To the blower again, a warranty, if it fails within one year.
It was two years ago, they did it. And then they just came, was it both furnaces or one furnace?
Main furnace.
Yeah.
Did you hear that?
No.
Could you say that a little louder?
It was in the main station. We have two different furnaces for each building. It was the main building that we had trouble with it.
The two separate furnaces?
The question was asked if there's two separate furnaces.
Yes, there is.
Yes. Close?
Yes, so we've got sixteen hundred dollars for fire department building repair. What kind of repairs are we doing? They're basically as needed repairs, isn't that right?
Yes.
They're basically as needed repairs, you know. The doors brought in, the doors rather ran, we replaced that, it was sixteen hundred and a half.
No payment? Are there any other questions? There are no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a vote on article eighteen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Article eighteen passes, thank you. Article nineteen, to see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance. Board of Selectmen recommends seventeen thousand nine twenty-eight, as does the Budget Committee. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for insurance, seventy thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Yes, sir?
What was the MMA version full cover?
It's probably some property casualty, general liability, bonding, that sort of thing.
So just if the town...
It's sort of a general liability for the town, yes. Property casualty, general liability.
Yeah, and what limits are there on that?
I don't know what those, what do you mean, limit?
How much can the town be sued for?
Under state law, the town can't be sued for more than four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand.
Any further discussion on the insurance article, article nineteen? Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Article nineteen has passage. Article twenty, to see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the library. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend two hundred dollars.
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for the library, two hundred dollars.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on article number twenty?
That's just sad.
Okay, just so that we're clear, if you want to say something, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. I appreciate your sentiment, Rhonda, that we've got to adhere to things. Yes, ma'am?
Just for the record, Rhonda, we go to Gary, we ask him what he needs. It's not up to us, I mean, the Budget Committee goes and says, you know, short of a handful of new volunteers and that sort of thing, Gary, he says, "Pretty good." He spends his money wisely and all that stuff.
I appreciate that, it's just...
Yeah.
Look at what more.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Gary would rather have more volunteers than more money. Right, if anybody's interested in helping Gary, volunteer at the library.
Any further discussion on article twenty? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Close? Article twenty has passage. To see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for E nine-one-one. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend six hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for E nine-one-one, six hundred dollars.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on article twenty-one? Yes, sir?
Who's doing the addressing now? Who's your addressing officer? So you get an extra six hundred?
No, that's just for supply. It's for supply.
We have to purchase the signs.
So then...
Repair signs and posts and...
The note beneath the article suggests that it might include payment to the addressing officer.
Used to pay a hundred dollars to the addressing officer, but it doesn't anymore.
Any further discussion on article twenty? Any further discussion on article twenty-one? Call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Why don't we take a short break here and people can grab their cake? It's been cut for you, it's in a plate back there. We will resume, we will resume shortly. You can eat your cake and listen at the same time, so we'll resume in five minutes. Well, thank you very much. Before I resume, I certainly do, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, want to thank the Cornerstone Marketplace for its treats. That certainly is an unusual experience and we, I'm sure everybody appreciates it. Thank you very much. I announced at the start of the meeting that Renee O'Donnell had been elected to another term on the Board of Selectmen. I neglected to say that Jessica Hamilton was elected to a three-year term on the School Committee with three hundred votes. So, congratulations to Ms. Hamilton. Is she not here?
She's not here.
Shall we wait? That's why I'm... They must be standing on both sides. All right, that's enough. We're going to resume with article number twenty-two.
They want to explain to her.
That's not my job. To see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemetery grounds. Do I hear a motion, the Board of Selectmen are recommending seventeen thousand two hundred and ten, as is the Budget Committee?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for cemetery grounds, seventeen thousand two hundred and ten.
Your discussion on this motion has been moved and seconded to raise seventeen thousand two hundred and ten dollars for cemetery. Yes, sir?
What is twenty-five hundred dollars worth of supplies? We already hired one and moved the molder.
How about, you can ask a question and then you can follow it up maybe, but...
Okay.
All right?
The twenty-five hundred dollars started last year to help repair some stones. The cemetery committee just got organized and the budget was over last year. They didn't get a lot of that done, but they're hoping to get some done this year to repair some stones. Set up, straightened out the repair stones.
Move to the next.
Right now, we're vacant. We've had nobody come forward to try to, to dig.
You have? Somebody else? Yes, sir?
We have had someone come forward that volunteered at the section.
Well, he didn't volunteer, I talked to him about it, but we haven't finalized anything.
Okay.
Any other discussions on the cemetery? If not, I'll ask for a motion on article twenty-two, not a motion, I'll ask for a vote on article twenty-two. All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three, and again, I'll dispense with the reading, but if you have any question about any particular agency, please feel free to ask after the motion has been made and seconded. To see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for, I guess I do have to read it. Hold on. To see what sum of money, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Eastern Area Agency on Aging, requested nine hundred. Penquess Cat, requested sixteen hundred ninety-seven. Unity Health and Counseling Services, request four hundred forty-five dollars. Bruce Run, request seven hundred. Life Flight, request seven seventy-five. Health Equity Alliance, request five hundred. Maine Public, request one hundred. Can I have a motion on all of these? And then we can discuss them individually and if we need to, we'll vote on them individually if there are some that...
I'll make a motion to raise and appropriate for all agencies listed, your requests amounts listed.
Perfect, thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. I anticipate that there can be discussion on any of these. We won't take them in any particular order. If anybody has any question or comment regarding any of these agency requests, please feel free. Lois?
Is anyone here to address any of these agencies? This one agency is asking for a four hundred dollars...
They're, to answer your question, yes.
There is.
So we'll see who's here and then you can perhaps address questions. May I ask which agency you're representing?
We're representatives of Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
We have representatives of Eastern Area Agency on Aging here, so we will take questions or comments regarding that. And I guess I'll ask if either of you ladies would like to have anything to say.
We'd like to thank you all for letting us speak tonight. I'm Ellen Angel, I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
Yes, I'm Stephanie Boyd, I'm the Director of Human Resources of the Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
So, we are asking for nine hundred dollars, which is the same amount that we requested last year. And basically, the biggest need that the agency has is, we provide Meals on Wheels right now. We provide it for forty-eight seniors in your community. And the state is, I mean, the federal governments are, a lot of the funds are drying up. So we're having to do more fundraising than we've done in the past. And we're trying to look for additional sources. But that particularly, right now, we have a waiting list, not necessarily from this community, but in our area, a waiting list of people to get on that, that particular program. And so we're looking for additional funds so that we can supply that need. The other one is, we have people that are... The other one is we have people that are, I mean, there's a list of things, but that's the biggest one in the commodity food program. So those are 30 pound.
Yeah, those are 30 pound boxes of food. It's a, it's through USDA, so we're the pass-through for it. So we receive the boxes of food and then distribute them to those in the community.
Which we supplement with fresh vegetables when they're available and things like that. And so if somebody has an immediate need, they can come to the agency and we can provide that. So these are services that we feel are really critically important and we're really being squeezed in a lot of directions. The other one is the pet food. And we have, I think, a significant amount of people that also.
Get the furry friends, so.
Yes, we have 40 people who also get pet food for that particular program, which is really helps people, you know, stay in their home and be happy. And that's what we're trying to.
Why don't you stay right here just for a moment, there may be questions for you. Lois?
Just a clarification. I totally support what you do, but you said you requested the same amount last year?
Yes.
But I'm looking at the town report from last year and you requested, it says in our town report, 500 dollars. So just a clarification.
Gee, I'm sorry, then I have the wrong, the wrong numbers because I've, mine says $900 last year.
I'm just going by the town report what we voted on last.
So maybe we asked for it and we didn't. It's possible to.
Yes, ma'am.
These funds are going directly to community members here in Newburgh.
The $900?
Yes.
We don't typically budget it that way. I mean, you know, so I can't say, oh, absolutely, you give me $900, I give you $900 back. But we calculate that the value of the services that we provided to residents, because if anybody calls in or if anyone's assisted by the agency, we keep really accurate records of where they come from. You know, they'll, we'll say, well, what community do you live in, et cetera? And right now, we calculate that the value of services to the, to the community of Newburgh were 6,489 dollars last year. So it's, you know, it's not a, 85% of whatever is supplied to the community comes from our general operating funds and other sources. So we're asking for approximately, I think it's between 12 and 15% to be provided for by the town.
Yes.
Two thought questions. One is the numbers you listed, were they Newburgh residents?
Yes.
And the second part of my question is all the other communities that you go into, are you seeking the double year contribution this year as well?
What's that double? You said it was 700?
And last year was 500.
500? No, we're not, I mean, again, what I have on my.
It goes town to town. Your analysis is town to town.
Town to town, right.
So we cover four counties, Panopscott, Piscataciss, Washington, Hancock County. So we deal with over 150 different municipalities. And so the, the ask amount is specifically based off of the number of services that we're providing in that town. So the ask amounts are going to be different for every town that we go to.
But you're asking for the same percentage increase from all the other communities?
Yeah, it's basically roughly based on the number of people we serve. So, or the number, you know, this dollar, this, our assessment of the value of, or the cost of the services we provide. So it's a percentage of that. So obviously, some communities ask more than others, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Were you at all aware that there was a bigger, more asking this last year than there was any before? Because it says not double, but from 500 you requested last year to 900.
I, I'm not sure that it's the amount of, of what you're asking as opposed to the need we have for additional funds because we're not getting the federal funds the way we used to, so in state plans might be.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
In the letter that the town received, just so you know, the increase, it may be an increase, but I don't think it's that much. In this letter that we received, I'm looking for the date on it. I don't see a date on the letter. But it said total cost of services in your town last year, 15,245 dollars and 50 cents. I think if they're asking for a contribution of 900, that's a, that's a pretty good deal. We're actually getting $15,000 of services, or our residents are getting $15,000 of services.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick calculation, 48 people on Meals on Wheels, that $900, that's $18 a person. Like, I don't know why everybody's kind of.
Poor.
You're on it?
Yes.
That's nothing, and that doesn't even include the pet food program. I mean, I say yes, 900, I'm not sure why we're having this discussion.
I agree.
Is there any discussion on any of the other service providers' requests?
I'd like a clarification. It says Spruce Run in here. They're no longer called Spruce Run? Do we have, is, is we just making a mistake in what we wrote in there?
It's once been in there and I didn't change it. Okay.
So women.
Officially, it is Partners for Peace. Okay. Officially, it is Partners for Peace.
Yes, ma'am.
What are Health Equity Alliance and Main Public?
Main Public is Main Public Broadcasting. Health Equity Alliance, you cannot, you can find the letter. I'm sorry? Oh, is Health Equity Alliance, correct, thank you.
Did you hear that, ma'am? Did you get that?
So it used to be Eastern Age Network? If we get a request from them? Yes, yes, it did.
Were all of these agencies requested this year?
Yes, all the letters are right here, we just don't have that one.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Anything there on Penquess as to how much we're getting?
Penquess Cat, right here.
How many people?
During the year, and you made their first 2017, Penquess Cat, I think they might have been 2018, but. Penquess Cat assisted residents of the town of Newburgh with services valued at 130,543 dollars. And it, it has a whole list of things that they provided for residents right there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. I'll ask first if there's any of the listed agencies that we wish to set aside or whether we can vote on them en masse. If you think we can vote on them en masse, please raise your hand. Okay? If you think that we should take them individually, raise your hand. Thank you. We'll call for a vote on them en masse. All those in favor of the total request made in Article 23, please raise your hands. Thank you. Opposed? Thank you very much. Article 23 passes as written. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general assistance, the budget, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend $1,500. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to raise and appropriate for general assistance, $1,500. Second?
Been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on Article number 24? Yes, sir.
We actually overspent on general assistance this year. So, but I think it was 300 and some odd dollars. So we spent the whole thing, but we get reimbursed, now we get reimbursed 16 some percent, I believe. Where we.
Who is it?
60, 60% of the state reimburses us back of what we spent.
Yes, sir.
Is that reimbursement on, on the expenditure, on the overture?
No, on the whole thing. Every time we have a case and they get, I submit a quarterly report of what we spent, they send us back half of it. So 60%.
Further comment, discussion, questions? Call for a vote. All in favor of Article 24, please raise your hands. Opposed? Article 24 passes, thank you. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to apply revenue from the following trust funds to reduce amount to be raised from taxation for roads and schools. The Selectmen recommend, and the Budget Committee recommends $20,000. And you will see the three trust funds listed there. And they gather the amounts listed are what the Selectmen and Budget Committee propose to, to use from those trust funds. It's not the balance of those trust funds. Is that correct? Is that correct? That's the amount shown or the amount you propose to use from the trust?
That's what we received.
Okay, what we received. Do I hear a motion on Article number 25?
I make a motion to vote and apply revenue from the following trust funds to reduce the amount to be raised from taxation for roads and schools in the amount of $20,000. Second?
It's been moved and it's been seconded. Is there a discussion on Article number 25? All those in favor of Article 25 as written? Opposed? Thank you very much. That's passage. To see if the town will vote to transfer the following from the undesignated fund balance or surplus to reduce the amount to be raised from taxation, the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $130,000. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to transfer $130,000 from the under designated fund balance surplus to reduce the amount to be raised from taxation. Second?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on Article number 26?
How much is in our designated fund balance, please? $680,000.
Is that before or after?
Before. After would be 550. And then we still have approximately, roughly about $60,000 from this budget maybe going back into our undesignated fund balance. It's unused funds.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 26. All in favor of Article 26? Opposed? Article 26 passes, thank you. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,000 for the Building Reserve Fund. So I can recommend yes.
I make a motion to raise and appropriate $1,000 for the Building Reserve Fund. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on Article number 27? Yes, ma'am. What is the Building Reserve Fund?
Well, we have a lease with this school. We are in that lease. We are supposed to maintain some money in a building reserve fund for any kind of major repair, basically. And that covers that fund.
So it's not money that would necessarily be spent unless there's a.
Right, it's not money that would necessarily be spent. It's just money that's, it's part of an agreement so that you can cover anything that comes up.
How much do we have in our current fund?
Ah, we're already in the area of $40,000.
How many, how much?
40,000.
40,000. Yes, ma'am.
That, that $1,000 is in addition to the other 1,600 that we appropriated on the.
I believe the other article was that money should be spent this year. This is putting money into a reserve fund. It can't be spent unless there's a further vote taken at a later date. Yes, sir, in the back.
Uh, releasing the building, but we're responsible for maintenance or.
Not, not 100%. We pay half, we pay half of the maintenance and utilities of the building.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Last year, there was supposed to be some conversation with the superintendent and the board as to when we might possibly get this building back to the town. What was ever done?
There's a lease right now that the town.
No, wait, wait, sir, sir. You have a tendency to follow up before the other person finishes it before.
The lease is up in 2020, I believe, or 2021. And at that time, there'll be two votes. One is going to be to close this school because it is still legally a school. They haven't closed it. And the town of Newburgh will do that. The second vote's going to be to, for the town to take ownership of this building for a dollar. It's all in the lease that the town authorized us, authorized, the board decided.
Years ago.
Two, three, four years ago. It was a seven-year lease.
Is that 2021?
I believe it's 2020 or 2021. I don't have it, I'm trying to.
Yes, sir.
Cindy, isn't that lease without seven years because the school had actually put a bunch of money into the heating system and it's part of the on or something along those lines?
Yeah, they did.
They actually technically own the building?
They can't sell it to the town right now for a dollar because it's in a, what they call a revolving fund, which is a grant fund type thing that they can't get out of until whatever year, 2020 or 2021. And so at that time, then they're going to sell it to the town.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that $5,000 that's already in the building fund? What would it cover? It's not an insurance, right?
No, it's, if we need to replace the roof on this building, furnace, those, I mean, that's, those are big expenses. And they, you know, they want to know that we have the money there to pay half of it to repair it.
Yes, sir.
If we're going to hold this thing for a dollar a couple of years, if we're doing maintenance for basically 50 cents on the dollars, does it pay a half? The only one that really knows this thing is in pretty good shape, we take it away. Because if the roof is bad, that's your fault.
Right, but right now, the roof's fine. Checked every year, but you never know what could happen.
We'll hope for a tornado next year.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, I'll call for a vote on Article number 27. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Article 27 passed. Article 28, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed 3/12. I think that's one quarter. Of the budgeted amount in each category during the period beginning July 1, 2018. It sells touch time as the annual budget is adopted.
That's a protection.
Okay.
I make a motion to pass over.
Second?
Second.
Pass over, and if we need to, we'll come back to it if anything goes off the rails between now and. Okay. There's, there's been a motion made to pass over. It's a rather unusual article, but it's been made and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the article, on the motion to pass over? Not on the article itself, but on the motion to pass over. If you are in favor of passing over, then we will pass over this article unless there's a need at the end of the meeting to come back to it. Then we won't. It'll be passed over. It's the same as if it was denied. Yes, ma'am.
Can we have an explanation what this is for? We just have a three-month wait until our meeting.
Because, because we changed the fiscal year. This used to be a, really a necessity because the fiscal year ended in December, the meeting was in March. We didn't even send out tax bills until July. We didn't get any money coming in until the fall. But now with the fiscal year change, we approve the budget and we accept it and approve it basically tonight after the meeting. And then we can send out tax bills. What, the first is going in September?
July.
July. And then the first payment is due in November. So in other words, our cash flow is much, in a much, much better position.
And we still keep this just in.
We keep this as a just in case. Right. If the budget's ever denied, like happened a couple of years ago, we fall back on this article so that we can still keep the lights on and keep the door.
All right, there's a motion to pass over. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we are passing over. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a withdrawal agreement, withdrawal agreement from Municipal Review Committee, Inc. Probably should be withdraw agreement with. But what we're saying is that we are withdrawing from the Municipal Review Committee, correct?
Yeah.
So to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to sign a withdrawal agreement with the Municipal Review Committee.
I make a motion to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a withdrawal agreement with the Municipal Review Committee, Committee, Inc.
Okay, there's an explanation below. I'll, I'll read it because it's probably worthwhile. worthwhile. It won't take long. Municipal Review Committee is the company that has overseen the town's perk interest for the last 20 years and holds an estimated $90,000 plus or minus in funds that belong to the town of Newburgh. They, MRC, have requested that the town sign an agreement in order to release these funds. The town voted two years ago to not continue the, with the relationship with MRC who has partnered with Fiber Right and the facility in Hampden. Did I get a motion on that?
Yes, you try to vote that.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. It is their discussion on Article twenty-nine. Not being any discussion, I'll ask for a vote on Article twenty-nine. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, and it's preceded by a note. The next three articles are for the same thing, but give three options for funding. For example, if people choose to approve Article thirty, we will skip over Articles thirty-one and thirty-two to make it formal. If that were to happen, we'd ask for a passover vote on Articles thirty-one and thirty-two. So essentially, the next three articles are for the same purpose, but proposing three different methods of funding. So I think it only fair that we at least read all three articles, then we're going to go back to and discuss if a motion is made, Article thirty, to begin with. So Article thirty is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to spend from undesignated fund balance or surplus, an amount not to exceed $73,635, to purchase 12 new air packs with tanks for the fire department. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $73,635 to purchase 12 new air packs with tanks. Now, raise and appropriate means that you'd be raising it in your tax dollars this year. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to procure a loan for up to five years for an amount not to exceed $73,635, to purchase 12 new air packs with tanks. So, if approved, the board will shop around for the best rate they can get for the town. So, three different ways of funding the same purchase. If you wanna make the purchase, then you can do so by either one of these funding methods. So, the making of the purchase is the common thread in all three of these articles. If you are opposed to making the purchase, then I guess you would vote no on all three articles. If you favor it, but favor one method of funding over another, you should participate in the discussion that's about to follow. So we'll go back to Article thirty, and I'll ask if there's a motion on Article thirty.
I make a motion to vote to authorize the board of selectmen to spend from undesignated fund balance surplus, an amount not to exceed $73,635, to purchase 12 new air packs with tanks for the fire department. Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It is their discussion on Article thirty. Yes, ma'am?
Actually, if this guy's going, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the, the board of selectmen have a preference?
We don't really have a preference. I would like to hear from the fire department though. This is a big purchase, and this is exactly what I was talking about in that art, in that, um, selectmen's letter. Kind of stuck, stuck on minds.
Okay.
So, can I have one of you guys, or both of you guys, say about, if you had a book on the issue, if you could go here?
Okay, the fire chief's gonna address this issue with us.
Which part do you wanna hear first?
We wanna hear it all.
Wanna hear it all, okay.
We wanna hear it all.
Um, we, we currently have on the, uh, the, uh, article, we have the, the higher of the two bids that I have, um, just because the price has changed and that gets it in the ballpark, so I don't wanna be having to come back for more money to do it.
Okay.
So I would ask if you do approve, would approve the higher amount. I do have lower I am asking for a RIT pack to go with it. The RIT pack is a, a pack that if we have a double flaps and there's a, a down firefighter or anything like that, we can go in and hook them to air, and it gives them continuous air so we can get them out, gives us more time to get them out before they run out of oxygen and, you know, it just, you know, I, I would like to see us do that. Um, I do have a price of, uh, I have the new one here. My quote is sixty-nine, nine forty is with the RIT packs for the cheap one. Um, there is a, a RIT pack that's available that's, uh, it's a demo model. I'm not sure if that's still available to us, and that brings the price down another, I believe it was another $2,000 lower than that, so.
Chief, can you explain a little bit what, why we have to make this purchase?
Um, the FX we currently have are fifteen years old. Uh, the shelf life of them is fifteen years old. We can't buy the, the pass line. The, the new FX have an integrated pass line. As soon as you breathe in air, the, the pass line comes off. The pass line is an alarm that goes off and lets us know when there's a down fire minute of a problem. Some reason he hasn't moved for more than 30 seconds, the alarm goes off, and we're going to, it's got a couple of different phases, and he can reset it by moving. But if he doesn't move, then we know there's a, an issue, so that lets us know. The older packs that we have, they have to turn it on. If they forget to turn that on, we don't know it unless somebody stumbled across them or, you know.
How many do we have?
Uh, twelve.
Yes, ma'am.
How many of your firemen right now are qualified to do interior attack, which is where I assume you use the air pack?
I have five currently, and I have two in training right now.
That's seven.
That's seven, yep. And we also have mutual aid companies that come in. They use the packs off by trucks. They come in and POV's. That gives them an air pack.
But for the downed, you're over.
And if we have broke down air packs, that, you know, that, we have, at any given time, we've got two or three out of service, so I mean, generally, we're running on nine right now, so I mean, that's, so it keeps us at twelve.
Five people right now just called tonight who are qualified to do interior.
Right.
And you've got two that are training.
Right.
Which is seven.
Right.
And then if we have.
And that's about $5,000 per unit.
Correct. Fifty-three, one, thirty-one.
We currently have twelve cell, twelve air packs that we want to replace.
We do, yeah.
Have to replace. By law, we have to replace. So just so you folks know, if you take it from fund balance, that would still, we still, because we just approved to use $130,000 of our fund balance, and that takes us down to $550,000 in our, in our fund balance. And if we approve $73,635, even if he doesn't spend that off, but that, that brings us down to about $476,000 in our fund balance, which is, is still a pretty, a pretty good fund balance.
Now, Sheriff, doesn't, you haven't closed up this year yet, and you made a comment before.
No, and we, we may have, um, unspent funds, so anything that's, anything that's left in the budget that's our money that goes back into your, into your fund balance. So right now, we have, right in the vicinity, just, you never know until the end of the year. You close the books, but we do have about $60,000 that we think will be returning back into our fund balance, so.
And will the $90,000 in the article recently approved, in Article twenty-nine, where will that go?
That we have, um, talked about, and we did talk about this when we, when we initially voted to leave the MRC, because you don't know what's going on with these companies. The MRC's already behind. Perk is in pretty good shape to our knowledge, but we did discuss setting aside that $90,000 in case something went askew.
We voted to do that.
We voted to do that for a couple of years. Did, did we set a timeline or? Nope, we didn't. We just set up the, the capital account for that money to set for a couple of years to see what's gonna happen. So it would not go into fund balance, but that $9,000 we'd set aside in case we needed a crash emergency. I'll call it that.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking, I went to the general ledger, GL report, and it says the undesignated fund balance, which is GL number 500X00, $1,123,472.96.
What was the date of that?
This is from July to April.
That's, because I haven't taken out the funds, the 142 that they voted last year. The audit does adjustments and fixes those numbers that, um, they take out the amount, the truck, the rescue truck will come out of that, um.
Just a big difference between that and the $680,000 that you just stated with the adjustment.
That number should actually match up to the audit, which it doesn't because of an audit adjustment that isn't done in the general ledger right now. Um, but if you look at the audit in the back, the actual fund balance at the end of last
So that's a preparation to approve Article thirty over the other.
Right, and won't raise taxes, and won't be paying.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am, in the back. You had your hand up in the back. Ma'am?
Oh, um, my question was, so the packs that you have right now expire.
December.
December. So once they expire, we can.
We can no longer do interior firefighting.
So they have to be replaced to save your life if you're in that situation, right?
To go in a building.
Pretty much any, if you're in the collapse zone of a building, you have to have an air pack on, so that's pretty much any time we have the hose, is somebody's gotta have an air pack on their back to hold it.
Yes, sir.
What are the conditions of spare bottles in those packs? Are they due to expire soon as well?
Uh, no, we got some with fourteen, twelve year life, on lifespan, so that's gonna, so that's gonna drop the price back. That's how we ended up getting a lower price.
Do you have any bottles that are outdated for spares for your pack?
Uh, yep, they come with a, a free spare bottle with each one, so that'll put twelve more in our rotation, because they do expire over fifteen years and they, you know, and we do have some that are coming to the end of their life, so.
Just out of.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, these, these air packs, are they limited to the person, just by facial hair and that kind of stuff?
I mean, assigned, are they assignable? And that hopefully can be.
Can they, can they wear them if they have a beard or anything?
No, no.
So you don't have anybody on your back that would be helped?
No, if there was an air pack, no. We got two people on it. The pattern was beard. They don't, they don't wear air packs.
Rhonda?
Because of, because of the cause, and you keep referring, would this action work for the home bid to see if you have.
She wants to know if it's gonna go out for a formal bid, and what you have in your hand is the bids we've got.
Yes, I put them out to bid, and that's what I'd get, that, uh, I'd get down to two, then there's, there's only two types of air packs I can light with, and that's pretty much where we're at with them right now.
Did you hear?
Hold on. You had a question a long time ago, and fact, you're the first person to raise their hand.
I was just gonna say, if these guys are going out and putting their life on the line, they should have the good equipment here. If they're coming in mind.
Thank you.
To save me, they should have something to save them. That's adequate.
Thank you.
So they should have something to be able to go and save you.
Okay, well, no, ma'am, ma'am. Appreciate your silence, but, yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Oh, how many other members of your department are able to qualify for interior attack? And I know some are, so, I mean, you've got five that can now.
I got five, I got two in training, um, I've got three applications on my desk, I mean, there's.
Applications of fire department or applications within the fire department?
I got applications to join the fire department on top of the twelve area, so, and we, we've been dealt with numbers over the last year, and it's, you know, that's why I don't really wanna see us drop that with twelve packs, because that's.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, if you only got seven people qualified on the fire department, and a bunch go down, because, you know, equipment is a hundred percent reliable all the time, I mean, so to ask for twelve bottles is not unreasonable. And as you said, it's going to expire, so we're gonna have to buy them anyway, and the equipment that we have now is outdated, and you can't even track where, when a fireman fall in a fire, and this new equipment can. And then, so the whole question here that we're actually talking about is to see if we're gonna take the money out of our reserve funds from the town. Now, I don't wanna pay a loan, and I don't want my taxes back.
That's sort of where my question was going too, because Renee just stated that our fund balance will be dropped to 550, so it's just gonna drop to about $73,000.
Correct.
What does our audit suggest we have, we keep enough?
Well, it used to be, it used to be a little bit higher.
Yes.
How much would it be? Does our audit suggest five, six? No, um, they recommend, what, the three-twelfths? Three-twelfths of a budget.
Essentially, three, three months worth of.
Three months.
Three months of working capital is what you should have in your, if that's what we're hearing. Is there any more? Yes, ma'am. This is gonna be your last opportunity, okay?
Why wouldn't it be better if you know you need seven now, to buy seven now so that your dates of expiration, and then next year, make some more out of the fund budget, and like, otherwise, ten or twelve years, whatever your warranty is, they're all gonna be out again, and you're gonna have to start all over again. Why not stagger that a little bit?
I'm just like you said, I mean, I got twelve with this down, so I, if I do that, then I'm taking five out of my arsenal, so if I lose two, now, now I can't even fight it by having to crash. I have two in, two out, so.
Is there anyone who hasn't posed a question or made a comment yet who wants to? Ma'am?
Um, so you said that anybody who even picks up a hose has to wear one?
Basically, a pass line, if you're within the collapse zone of the building.
So can that be somebody who's not an interior firefighter? So even though you only have five interiors, you could need more packs?
If it's a situation where they have to wear an air pack, they have, they have to be certified to wear, because.
So they have to be an interior firefighter to be used to certify to wear?
Uh, yes.
Okay. But there are other people that come and wear our packs to help us.
Right, from others around the town, yep.
So even though we have seven qualified, if we have another ten come in, and they bring three firefighters, they'll need three packs, so then we need ten.
Right, yep.
Don't you think they might be, they're all.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
Thanks. Rhonda, and this is your last one, too.
Isn't it possible that the reason we're dealing with is because of the form of the product? It'll get missing.
Correct, yes. The price will go up if I buy seven, I thought.
All right, if there aren't any, yes, ma'am?
A little fast, I'm.
You better identify yourself for us.
Um, Ellen, you know, because of her, but in my other career, I worked a lot with fire trucks, and throughout the state, we had a lot of control actually getting qualified people to be firefighters. In fact, if you got people willing to join the, um, force to do the, you know, and, you know, they're putting their, their cells on the line, not just when they fight a fire, but through, um, you know, cancer rates, through a whole bunch of things that firefighters are exposed to. And the equipment that they need is really critical to doing their job. And it's kinda like on the airplane, when you say put the mask on, you need before you help your kids to have their mask on. If firefighters don't have a baby, you can't do their job, they don't, it's pretty helpless.
All right, this is a final call for questions or comments. The final call. Okay. We have Article thirty in front of us. It proposes the purchase and a funding mechanism, which is to borrow from undesignated fund balance. If you vote yes on this, you're voting for the purchase and the use of the undesignated funds for the purchase. All those in favor of Article thirty? Okay. We have Article thirty in front of us. It proposes the purchase and a funding mechanism, which is to borrow from undesignated fund balance. If you vote yes on this, you're voting for the purchase and the use of the undesignated funds for the purchase. All those in favor of Article thirty? All those opposed? Article thirty has passage. As we said before, if Article thirty passed, we would not have to address thirty-one and thirty-two. I'd like my assistant here in the third row to maybe make, make a motion that we pass over Articles thirty-one and thirty-two.
I make a motion that we pass over Articles thirty-one and thirty-two.
Second.
Second.
A second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Almost there.
Article thirty-three. Article thirty-three. To see if the town will vote to amend the ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs in the town of Newburgh. Section three of the ordinance presently reads as follows, what you see... What? What you, section three of the ordinance. Section three of the existing ordinance reads as you see it. The proposal is to strike those words which are stricken through uh, in this, uh, with this article. Is there any discussion? Actually, I need a motion.
I make a motion to amend the ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs in the town of Newburgh as written.
Second. Is there a discussion on Article thirty-three? Yes, ma'am.
We shouldn't be having anything that is not certified by federal government.
I, well, I don't think that we, I don't think under state law the town is going to receive any tax money under the current state of affairs. But your comments noted nonetheless. You're saying even if the town could, it shouldn't. Okay?
Could I, could I?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I address this one? What, what this is, um, this is mostly to, I should back up here. We have been approached to have a marijuana grow facility. People want to raise their own. So we looked into the ordinance of it. Um, basically, what we want to do is to protect, we don't want, we want to limit the sale of it like a store, an over the counter sale, where you come in and purchase it or get, um, you know, that sort of thing. There are people who are growing it, who are processing it into oils, who are growing it and then wholesale, you know. Um, that's what this basically limits them to. If someone were to come into town, they could come into town, have a farm. They could, you know, harvest their crop and sell their crop. They could have, harvest their crop, they could make oils. They could, I don't know, maybe clothing would have, I don't know. I don't know how it all works. But it's just for that sort of, that, that process. We are limiting any kind of retail sales, retail shops, or anything like that.
Sir.
Are you saying it forbids them coming into town?
It doesn't forbid them from coming into town. We had to, we had to come up with some sort of guideline here. So, um, so let's say Joe Schmo comes to town and wants to grow marijuana around Newburgh and sell it to somebody who processes it into oils or something like that. This ordinance would allow them to do that. If Joe Schmo wants to come into town and open up a retail marijuana store besides the local bakery, it, it, he cannot do that.
So he can farm it, he can have the store front.
Right, exactly. He can farm it, process his product, but he cannot have any kind of store front.
Yes, sir.
Currently, that would be illegal, maybe.
I don't...
Legal or illegal?
Marijuana.
That, that's up to the state. That's, that's up to the, this whole thing. It's kind of confusing because the state really didn't get their act together on this whole issue for quite some time. So we're just trying to follow the line and protect, you know, what's going on.
If I, if I could step out of my role as moderator for a moment and address you as the town's attorney, and the selectmen haven't heard this, so I, I apologize if any of this, it, it shouldn't affect your vote, but I think you ought to understand what this vote might mean or not mean. But as the, as the legislature finally resolved this matter before adjourned in, in May or late April, um, it puts the, it, it, the law has finally enacted, requires that a town positively vote to do things. So you can positively vote to have commercial marijuana operations in your town. You can positively vote or not to have retail operations in your town. Most communities in Newburgh is one adopted ordinances that prohibited, uh, retail sales and in most instances also commercial sales because the earlier version of the, of the statute required that we prohibit it. Otherwise, it would be allowed. The way the statute was finally passed, it said that we have to allow it or it's prohibited. So I think merely amending this ordinance is really a matter of sentiment. I think if you want to move forward with this or there's a, a, a company out here that wants to move forward further, we're going to have to address it further. Because with the passage of this, all you're doing is saying it's not prohibited, which isn't the same thing as saying we hereby license and authorize it. So we might have to revisit this. Your vote tonight, um, is probably more of a, a vote of the sentiment of the town. Um, it's probably not the last you'll hear on the issue. Sorry. Anyone else want to comment on this? Yes, ma'am.
Is there any chance of the federal government stepping in and saying, you're allowing marijuana to be grown in the town? We're not going to give you federal funds or anything? I mean, we, it's crazy down here right now. I mean, is that...
I think, I, I, I think you just answered your question with your last comment. Good. It's, it's crazy down there. Yes, that would be within the realm of craziness. And it's possible, yes. Good.
The federal government hasn't done that to other states yet.
No.
So it'd be unlikely that they would start with us.
Yes, you have to comment, not a question, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The federal gentleman, this jury, the state man, has stated that he will not pursue any, in the last month, so that he's not going to stop this, stop this way here for the, he's not going to spend money on pursuing this stuff. So, um, can the gentleman do it? Yes, but he's on record as saying he's not going to do it.
Yes.
Uh, I just have a question.
Yeah.
Have we looked at how Hamden has approved their med? Have we looked at how Hamden has approved their? Because I know that they have a couple legal medical marijuana...
I have a copy of it here in my office.
Need to understand, if you're, Hamden is, you're talking medical marijuana.
I, I think it is medical and there's a new recreational on Carmel Road.
Yeah, but your ordinance isn't talking about either one of those things. Would this amend it?
I'm just curious if it's, if we're going to be, uh, what our neighbors do or...
Would you like that to be the case or not?
I'm just curious, I was just curious if it's something that we looked into, if we're going to...
We, we have to pursue this a little bit further, like you said. I don't think this is elastic up here.
Any further discussion on Article number thirty-three? Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to pass over that?
Is it possible?
If that's passed over, you would, we would be allowing retail marijuana stores in our town.
Either way, aren't we actually allowed to, because we're not just allowing it? Is that what you were saying earlier, just so that it draws a...
No, I think that you have to enact... Requires a, an affirmative vote of a community to allow either recreational or retail sale or cultivation on a commercial scale. It now requires a positive vote to that effect. I don't think you could even enact an ordinance right now though because the state hasn't come out with its regulations yet. And you, you could find that you, you've enacted something that's going to be either contrary to and inconsistent with the state regulatory scheme. They may say you can only build these things within, you know, it has to be so many feet from a school or a church. And your ordinance might say something different. So your ordinance would be invalidated at least as to location and all. So, um, I don't think that the land, the, the horizon is, is clear yet. But I don't think that there's anything that the town of Newburgh can do further than what it's, what it's done right now. You can open a retail shop in Newburgh right now. Not, not you only, I mean. Neither could I. All right, I'm going to call for a vote on this unless there are further questions. Is that a question or an early vote? Voting early, okay. All right. All those in favor of Article thirty-three, as written, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Thirty-three has passage. Article thirty-four. Shall an ordinance entitled Newburgh Land Use Ordinance be enacted? I hear a motion on this, please.
I make a motion that an ordinance entitled Newburgh Land Use Ordinance be enacted.
There a second? We moved in second. Is there a discussion on the enactment of an ordinance entitled Newburgh Land Use Ordinance? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make, I would like to suggest that we, at this moment, though it's down sometimes because there has not been enough time for most of the citizens to actually review it. I got the email on Friday that it was available. Um, and the meeting to go review it was on Monday. And we're here Thursday voting on it. I think the town, uh, town people should have had some more time.
Second. Well, the motion on the floor is that, that's not really a second, but I think it's an endorsement of a second.
I don't have to...
We call the planning committee.
For regulations, we needed to make a public hearing, which we did so. We followed all those rules. So there was a sudden...
Yes, ma'am.
It was pub...
Uh, I'm sorry.
It was in the paper, on the website, and also posted, I think it was rather.
Ma'am.
I understand we leave ourselves wide open. This new, uh, ordinance covers a lot more than our old land ordinance. By not, by postponing this, we're leaving ourselves open with our regulations. There's a lot of new areas. The other one is so old. Um, so I just want to realize, everybody to realize how important it is that we do move quickly and, uh, if people are real interested, that they do read it and become aware and are able to get on the new ordinance and...
Any other discussion on the adoption of this ordinance? Okay. I'm going to call for a vote on Article thirty-three. All those in favor of Article thirty-four, which is the adoption of a land use ordinance entitled, excuse me, an ordinance entitled Newburgh Land Use Ordinance? Please signify by raising your hand. Okay, hold your hands up. This looks like it's going to be closer than... All those opposed? I have twenty-three in favor and thirteen opposed. Does anybody want to doubt that or are we going to call that a vote?
Call it a vote.
Call it a vote. We've reached the end of our evening. I accept a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I'm going to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you all.